Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday. It is February 22, 2011, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. Let me inform you, this is an open meeting. Imposed in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act, made accessible to all members of the public. I would ask that you join us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Under action, I would request a motion for approval of the consent agenda. As provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second for approval of the consent agenda. If you will please vote.
All council persons voting in affirmative.
Okay. And as well, I would request a motion for approval of the full agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval of the full agenda. Again, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Okay. Under special presentations tonight, as always, we ask for a recreation update. I don't know that there's much to be shared, but Shane, anything at all?
No, Your Honor. There isn't a great deal to share. As you know, DLR gave their presentation last council meeting, and they're moving forward with those bids. Burback continues to work with staff and with the Citizen Subcommittee on the water and the pool piece to refine that, and they'll be going to bid shortly, in short order as well. But that'll be coming in front of elected officials at a point in the near future. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or attempt to answer any questions that the council or anyone would have about the recreation plan.
Shane, I have a question as far as the process, and I know that the field turf is going to be the first thing put out for bid, or it's already out for bid. Is that information going to go back to the Recreation Subcommittee, and they're going to come forward with a recommendation? Or will they have three or four options and send one forward? Or will HDR just send their recommendation forward? How does that process look?
What DLR has is what they describe as a matrix. So they have, I think, 12 vendors actually that are sitting for that bid, or are going to compete for that bid on the turf. They'll plug their product into this matrix, and they look at a number of, quite a number of factors when they look at turf. Strength and durability and safety factors, and a lot of things that I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind completely around. But once they filter all those bids into that matrix, then they'll basically shake out the most responsive bidders in that place, and DLR will make that recommendation to the city.
I apologize. I said HDR.
No, the right.
So we're just going to have, we'll just have one option come forward, and that's what we'll vote on?
Well, you'll be able to look at those options. I think you'll be able to look at all those options, and it'll be up to you to make a decision. But DLR will make a recommendation, is my understanding.
So it won't go back into the Recreation Subcommittee?
No.
I was just curious of the process.
One of the other things, I think, that's relevant to this is that not only is the turf being bid in the alternate for completion in either 2011 or 2012, but even when those bids are received on March 3, that's not going to be dispositive of it because the bids for the foundation for that are also going to be bid in the alternative. So those two parts are going to have to be married to see which one of those is the most beneficial, if you will. And I guess that's the only other part to...
Right. Thank you.
Do we know, Shane, from DLR? Because bid dates are basically two weeks apart, or the document's coming out fairly soon on Veterans Memorial Park?
The documents for the concrete for the building, or those kind of things? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, I suspect DLR will have those out shortly.
We don't know.
I don't know an exact time, Dennis. They didn't tell us in, that last minute, the exact day.
My recollection is that it should be this week, but I haven't seen anything in the last week or so that they've said, "We got them, we're ready to go."
I was going to say, Gary and I, now Gary's paying attention here, didn't, we talked with Curtis Johnson this afternoon about another matter, and didn't he say that the bid documents for the non-turf portion of the project that they're bidding were going to the printer on Thursday?
That's the same. She thought the 24th as well.
It's going to be a short turnaround, Congressman.
Yeah, it's extremely short turnaround, and one project's $300,000 to $400,000 project, and the other's probably 10 times that. So I get some real concerns about timing, both there and in the other ends, but I guess we'll see.
Yeah, DLR is involved in that, and you know, they are hired experts, so that's what they recommended, and that's what we're following.
Okay.
Might I suggest that we certainly share that concern with DLR tomorrow in some way?
Will do, Mayor.
Would you do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Under public hearings, there's a request here before us for a public hearing to discuss the 2011 through '16 One and Six Year Improvement Plan. I'd like to open the hearing and look for Dennis to be the informer tonight.
Do we have microphones? I think so. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about the One and Six Year Street Plan. I'm going to primarily focus this evening on the one-year plan. If you have any questions about the six-year plan, I most certainly will answer them to the best of my ability, and I don't necessarily want to shy away from them. But the one-year, and the plan we're talking about is for the fiscal year that starts October 1 of 2011 and goes through September 30 of 2012. So most of this stuff, if it's just showing up in the one-year plan, doesn't have any previous history, will be stuff that will be occurring in 2012 construction season. The first item is that $650,000 for miscellaneous street maintenance work that we do by contract. This is either concrete repairs, cracked ceiling, armor coating, or overlays, and that stuff will be determined after, through the winter, a year from now. The second item is that we provide a little bit of money for intersection funds in residential paving districts, and both of those items are kind of a recurring item that we do year after year, or try to. Item number six is Highway 35 between Omaha Avenue and Norfolk Avenue. This is a Department of Roads project. It's tied to some earmarked funds. I'm not sure that this will move forward if the earmarked funds aren't released by Congress, so this is kind of one of those, it's in here, just in case. At this point in time, I wouldn't hold out a lot of hope that something's going to happen there in 2012, but we've got it out there. And Project Eight is actually the intersection of Victory Road and Norfolk Avenue. They just have them separated. The Department of Roads does these two projects, so those two are tied together. Either one will go, or neither will go.
And so they would go, I mean, they'll just one way or another. If Item Six went, Item Eight would move into 2011, 2012, expected year?
It's probably a situation where that project's going to take more than one fiscal year, so it'll be overlapped in just exactly how that, how they actually, the actual phasing occurs, I'm not sure, but the dollars will probably get spent over two fiscal years.
Okay.
Project Nine and Ten are related. Project Nine is the federal portion of the project. Project Ten is the local portion, and this is 25th Street. We continue to work toward right-of-way acquisition on that project. It's a slow process, but we are making, we are making progress. We're right now in doing an environmental re-evaluation of a part of that project due to some minor changes that we made in the area, which tripped our review, and nothing happens very fast, but we keep drudging away. We do have the initial appraisals done on 40 out of the 41 tracks. They're moving forward to get a review appraisal, and then the Department of Roads review. Hopefully, by the time we get those review appraisals and the Department of Roads review done, we will be at a point where we can start, have the environmental done, so we can start the acquisition process. But really hoping to get all of the right-of-way acquired by around August, and if we do, then the Department of Roads will move that into letting in the fall of the year. Item number 14 is actually, it's a next-year project, but it's a project to redo 13th Street or Highway 81 from Pazwalk Avenue south to Sherwood Road, and basically do the same thing there that they did from Pazwalk north to Alaska. And I think that, I got an email just in the last day or two that indicates to me that the cost of that project is going to go up considerably from what I'm showing here, so...
I was going to say, that looked like the bargain of the century.
I think they're probably at least another half a million dollars to that estimate, if not more. 15, 16, and 17 are all related, and it's the Northeast Industrial Highway. It's connecting Highway 35 and Highway 81 with a route, it'd be a two-lane road through there. About a half a mile south of Nucor Road is the alignment. We think we have a plan, and this is actually a county project with the city of Norfolk providing some funding. And it's a Stanton County and a Madison County project as well. We think we have developed a design that the environmental permits that we need from the Corps of Engineers will qualify for what they call nationwide permits. Means that we've got the impacts to wetlands very minimal, and we're staying away from any stream adjustments. And if we can stay in nationwide permits, we're looking to be able to get those permits sometime this spring and move forward with Phase One of that project this fiscal year, this summer, this calendar year, starting in the summer. And that's basically the portion from Highway 35 to Victory Road. And then it also provides for, Nucor, as a part of this process, is going to build a new entrance into their plant off of this new road. So we hope that that project gets started moving forward, and then the next two phases, the county would like to move forward as quickly as possible. But the city has committed to $3 million to this project over the, I'm showing it over three fiscal years, but we will do everything in our ability to have the funds available when the county wants to move forward with that project, so... With that, I will answer any questions anybody might have.
Dennis, as far as that highway, the new, that northwest corridor, is that, have they sequenced that? Is it any clearer how they're going to sequence that? They're going to do the east portion first, then the west portion, then the viaduct area, or have they clarified that?
It's not been finalized. I think that the lean right now is to do, start at the east and just keep moving west. But that's a county decision, and that's just where I think my feel is right now that they're heading, but that can all change, you know, depending on lots of various activities. Probably one of them might be right-of-way acquisition, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dennis?
A reference item 14, Dennis. Who's going to have, who's deciding, in fact, are they, are us, or the State Department of Roads?
As far as when it happens, or what gets done, or...
Well, you know, you say that there's probably a $500,000 discrepancy there.
It's a Department of Roads project. The city of Norfolk, it's a Department of Roads highway. They've got the maintenance responsibilities. If it's in the community, their rules and regulations require that we participate in that activity. It's an 80/20 split on the cost share between what city and what state, and we don't have to pay for anything that occurs over the viaduct. The viaducts are a separate section, and that's 100% state responsibility. The cost increase is coming about from they've gone back and looked at the road again and have determined that they're going to have to do more concrete, full panel depth replacements before they can overlay it than they had originally planned. So that's where the cost increase is coming from.
Really, the cost increase is between the $44, $400,000 to $5 million?
Actually, we're on the, I think you're on the wrong line there.
Wrong line, sorry.
It's from about $1.5 million to $2 million. So, but, and then 20% of that, so it's about $100,000 for the city, 125 additional.
That helps me, thank you.
I also have a request in that that local portion be from the federal funds, and it appears that that may happen, too, so...
So explain that a little further for me, Dennis.
I've made a request to the Department of Roads that federal funds be used, the federal funds that come to the city, like the federal share of 25th Street, some additional funds, federal funds, that could potentially come to the city would be used as our match on this project. So as opposed to the $165,000 of our local gas tax, it would be federal funds and...
So Dennis, in the various things that you've talked about in this plan, are there any property tax dollars or sales tax dollars that are being spent in this plan?
The stuff that I talked about today, no. This is strictly highway gasoline tax. We pay roughly 26, 27 cents a gallon for gasoline tax, state gasoline tax, and a portion of that comes back to the cities and the counties. And the city of Norfolk gets about, in round numbers, $1.7 million in gas tax. We call it CHAF funds, City Highway Allocation Funds. Out of that $1.7 million, we transfer about $415,000 to the general fund to be used to help support the street division activities, snow removal, pothole repairs, all of those types of things. The other $1.3 million is used for capital street projects that are showing up on this list here. And then, like line item number nine is some additional federal dollars that go to the state that get passed through to the city, and those all have to be done according to the federal highway and the State Department of Roads rules, and the manual for that is now in excess of 500 pages without any appendixes.
So Dennis, when you talk about the 20% match, that is, is that an expenditure of those CHAF funds that goes to that? An allocation of some of those?
Yes, the way it is shown here, but I have asked the Department of Roads if we can use the federal highway money that gets passed through to us to be our match for that, and they're telling me I think that can happen.
But in either event, neither of those sources are sales tax or property tax?
That is correct. They're all gasoline taxes or fees.
Anybody else with any questions or thoughts or concerns?
Excuse me?
Any other discussion on this at all?
No, I'm satisfied with the explanation.
Me, too. I just get a little bit confused sometimes of where all these dollars are coming from, and I appreciate the input, Dennis. Thanks.
Just keep asking.
I will, I will. Okay. If no further discussion, then we'd ask for a Planning Commission report.
Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the city of Norfolk 2011, 2016 One and Six Year Street Improvement Plan on February 8, 2011. It was presented by the city engineer and discussed in its entirety with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the One and Six Year Street Improvements Plan.
Okay. And with that, I will close the hearing and ask for a motion for consideration of Resolution Number 2011-1 approving the One and Six Year Plan as before us tonight.
Your Honor, I would move consideration of Resolution Number 2011-1. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council persons voting in affirmative. Resolution 2011-1 is adopted.
And last item on the agenda is a request for approval of the bid from Fairbank Scales for installation of one new truck scale at the transfer station for a total of $51,026. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Any motion in a second for consideration? We'll look to Mr. Lund for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. On February 10, we took five bids for one new truck scale. This item will add a scale to the transfer station. It would provide inbound on one side and outbound on the other. The bids are listed specifically in your packet tonight. They run $43,750 as bottom bid, $51,000, $60,000, $64,000, and $75,000, roughly. The $43,750 for Rice Lake has a problem, I think is serious, with lightning protection. That's why I'm recommending the $51,000 Fairbank scale. $8,000 is a lot of money, but that is probably less than one lightning strike. Our last lightning strike was $11,000 at the landfill, and it was because we had one weak component inside the scale building, and it took out the scale, the cameras, the computer, and the phone. So I don't think this is the time to soften up the specifications, and I think it's, I think that is a very sound equipment specification. The $51,206 for Fairbanks would put the scale in and make it operable. We also need to spend some money remodeling that scale house, putting the workstation on the north side. We've got $10,000 in the budget for that. That would be done partly by in-house staff, and the biggest item in that work would be an electrician. We've discussed this for some time, this issue of when to pull the trigger on this second scale. By way of review for the new council members, we have, we've gone from about $11,000 customers per year to $22,000, keeping in mind that right now we're in kind of a recession. I fear that if the recession ends quickly, the traffic problems we're having are going to be untenable very quickly. We have peaks typically through April and June is our highest months, Monday, Friday, Saturday, the highest days. Right now is the slowest month. We've held this off, I think, as long as we can. We've discussed adding hours on Saturday. That's one of our busy days. That would not address the bulk of our customers on Mondays and Wednesdays. We could add a staff member on Saturday to speed the communications with the customer, but they still have to come into the scale house. We can still just do one transaction at a time, so that would be of minimal assistance. We've talked about a remote, unattended dump site for yard waste. That would be, that would be a garbage dump. Unattended is proven out to be a bad idea everywhere, small towns, large towns. It would take attendance. We'd have to add staff to do that. We also looked at the cost of providing a free service. We would lose about $15,000 a year. I would remind the council that this would be paid for by reserves from the transfer station operating account. This is not tax-funded. The initial operation about 16 years ago was bonded for about three months of operation, and we've been self-sustaining since then. We're here because the customers are asking for good service, and we're running out of scale time. Every one of those alternatives leaves a problem in place, except for the new scale. Well, we have been, I just reviewed some of the memos on this issue. We've been discussing this. I have one in file from November of '09 indicating that the discussion was well underway, so I think we're at 18 months of discussion. I, well, I highly appreciate the scrutiny of the council. I do think it's time to move ahead on this, and I'd appreciate your approval of the issue of the item tonight.
Mayor, Council...
Ain't any questions, as long as my voice lasts?
It's getting a little weak there, Gary, losing your voice. One thing that's important to share with the full council out of the Subcommittee, one point that was made by all members of the Subcommittee was really the perception in tight budget times, as we definitely, and I really appreciated this comment, this concern, in the tight budget times that we're facing as a state and as a federal government, and obviously as a city government, you know, there's always this perception out there as, well, how can you spend $51,000 or $61,000 with remodel of the scale house when you're forecasting or have potential to lose state aid at $191,000? You know, that's been in the press pretty frequently, as in the recent weeks, and the legislature has not finalized that decision, but we anticipate that decision to be made, that we will be losing $191,000. And I think it's important always to remind, as elected officials and as staff, is to take the opportunity to explain the differences between the general fund and the enterprise fund, and how those dollars are coming about, and what they really look like to the budget. So if, for example, this $51,000 or the $61,000 that Gary's talking about really isn't a property tax, it isn't a tax at all, it's a user fee that is going to be established, it's not established, but that is established. So it's in the budget, and it's supported by user fees, so it doesn't have any bearing on, we can't wave a mag- So it doesn't have any bearing on, we can't wave a magic wand and not purchase the scale and save the $61,000 or transfer it over to the general fund, for instance, to save that. I mean, we don't have the ability to do that. So it's important to separate that out for, not only in our own minds, as elected officials and the staff, but also for the citizens to hear that. I think it'd also be nice if we kind of, Dennis, if you could give them a basic overview of that enterprise fund and the differences more intercolored than I was able to there. Between that and the general fund would be helpful, helpful to the citizens to hear that as well.
Well, we have a water fund, a sewer fund, and a solid waste fund. And we refer to those as our combined utility fund. We also refer to those as enterprise funds. And basically, the enterprise fund is a fund that we operate as a business. We expect it to have, it's a revenue source that is great enough from user fees to pay for its expenses. Probably the difference between our business or enterprise fund and the private sector is we're not out trying to make a profit. We want to have our revenues so that we generate enough income to pay for our operating expenses, our capital additions, and the debt service on the major capital additions. The other thing is, is all of those funds are user-based, and our user fees are based on cost of service studies. So we try very, very hard not to cross-pollinate those funds. In other words, we want the water fund to stand on its own two feet, we want the sewer fund to stand on its own two feet, and we want the solid waste fund to stand on its own two feet. And we do a good job of that. And then, we have a general fund that pays for services that aren't going to generate a revenue, police services, fire services, general administration, engineering services. And those funds are paid for from property taxes, from occupation fees, from the lease of our electric system to NPPD, some user fees for ambulance services and those types of things. And we segregate those funds in their own area and deal with them separately. You just heard me talk about the CHAF fund. That's also another separate fund that we keep with our revenues from our gas tax and expenditures on streets. And we, on an annual basis, have to send a report to the Department of Roads that shows that for every dollar of gas tax we get, that we spend at least 50 cents more of our own local money on that. And that comes from property taxes and sales tax and those types of things, so. You really need to keep those separate. They need to be kept separate. You know, the industries that pay huge bills expect that they want rates that are fair and cost-of-service-based because they don't want to help subsidize somebody else. So you have to keep those funds separate to be able to show them that, yes, water funds were used for water services and sewer funds were vice versa. So it works both ways, you know. If you start taking money from the utilities or the enterprise funds and going to the general fund, the big users are going to expect general fund dollars to come to support the utility funds.
And it comes down to, you know, in this particular issue with the scale, it has many things, if not all things, that we do as city government comes down to one thing, and that's customer service and our ability to service the customer, you know. And when staff looks at their crystal ball on this particular issue, Gary, as he said, would tell you that really the only true way to increase customer service is to add another scale. It gives an inbound, it gives an outbound, it allows for that interaction and that flow to be much more seamless than it is now. You don't have the butting of heads, if you will, at the one scale for folks that are going in and out of the transfer station. So truly, you know, when you look at the crystal ball, we think that that's going to increase customer service and in turn will increase the use of the transfer station. And if that happens, it's going to increase revenues for that fund, and that's what we're all about. As Dennis said, it's a business, it's a business model that we're looking at, a nonprofit business model that we're looking at. So are there other solutions out there that have been kicked around? I think there may, may not be. I think, Gary, you'd say that you've looked at it pretty hard as a manager and studied that issue pretty long and hard, and would say that most of those stones have been turned over. So it's a matter of can you delay the decision? Absolutely, as the council has that prerogative, delay decision. But you've got to ask yourself, is this a decision that we're going to pull the trigger on maybe not this year, maybe now, or a year from now, or five years from now, or 10 years from now? And if the answer to that is yes, then, you know, your cost, your effectiveness of purchasing the scale now is going to be realized. Because if you pull it 10 years from now, it's just going to be that much more, and you're going to lose your opportunity for customer service. So I just give you those thoughts from staff's perspective to think about, and sure be happy to answer any questions that the council has on the scale.
What is the total number, just ballpark figure, for the enterprise fund budget annually?
Four and a half million.
Shane, I understand you can't take this money and throw it in the general budget, but can he take this money and pay for something in his budget coming up where we could save $51,000 on his budget, so when that $191,000 comes down, that possibly we're going to be asking everybody to cut a little bit? Would this be something he could cut and then use that money to pay for? Would he cut?
You mean another line item?
Yes.
Well, his fund stands alone, as Dennis described. So his personnel, his equipment, the 84 account that he purchases that Gary has access to for solid waste division stands alone. So can we use that $51,000 and buy Scott at the fire department, buy him a new ambulance or new cot or something like that? No.
No, no, let's don't switch, let's don't switch.
Just for Gary's budget?
Let's take Gary's budget.
Could he substitute that? Yes.
He would have to have nothing that he wants, but if he has stuff in there for $51,000, can he use that money to pay for that $51,000 worth of stuff that he wants?
In next year's budget?
Yes.
Yes, I would say the answer would be yes. You agree with that, Gary?
But it will not have any impact on the $191,000 that we're going to lose of state aid.
Yeah, so it doesn't?
No, it won't, because we're going to lose that. But if we ask everybody to cut their budget a little bit to cover that $191,000, that'll be part of it.
But his budget won't. He's in an enterprise fund that is self-sustaining. It has its own revenues and its own expenditures. So the $191,000 that we're going to lose in the general fund doesn't have any impact on, he could, if he didn't spend a hundred, if he didn't spend any money next year, you're still going to be $191,000 short in the.
Right. But if he has something on his budget, we can't use that money to offset?
No.
Some of the money that he wants to get out of that budget?
You've got to look at them, they're separate boxes.
Okay.
You've got a box for water, you've got a box for solid waste, you've got a box for sewer, and you've got a box for general fund. And you can't intermix the boxes.
Yeah, but I'm not asking.
If he wanted to buy a pickup for it's the next budget.
In his budget, yeah.
In his budget, and we forego the scale, is that the question you're asking?
Yes.
Forego the scale, could we take that $51,000 and apply it towards a pickup?
Yes.
The answer would be yes.
And that's what I'm asking.
But that doesn't help the $191,000 that we have a shortfall in.
It doesn't, but yet it does, because he doesn't ask for a pickup because he's going to buy his own pickup with that money.
Right, but he doesn't ask for, he, Gary's budget never comes, affects the general fund. And that's really the perception that the subcommittee was talking about, Councilman Faust. And it's a hard one really for citizens and everyone to get their mind wrapped around. They're thinking, you know, in simple, in Shane Widener's personal budget, you'd absolutely be able to say that. But when you have different funds that can't be cross-pollinated or can't be used for, you can't transfer from the enterprise fund into the general fund, then, you know, you're serving two masters really there. You can't solve the budget on the back of his fund. You can't solve the general fund budget on the back of the enterprise.
Okay, because that's one perception out there.
It is out there.
And that would be a nice way. We've got to start coming up with inventive ways to do that, and we've got to start tightening our belt. And I haven't heard of a lot. I've talked to some of the garbage guys and just people about standing in line out there and sitting in line, and I don't see a lot of that. So I'm questioning if we even need a new scale, if they're not lining up out there too. So I thought that might be a simple way of doing it.
I wish, you know, in a perfect world, we could do that, but it would really complicate the budget, and frankly, we have not ever done that, and we'd be foolhardy to do that at this point, to start cross, using sewer funds to support general fund revenues, and we'd get ourselves in a bind, much like the community of Bellevue, I believe it was, that got themselves sideways because they were doing some of that.
Okay.
They were transferring illegally, really, transferring and using funds out of an enterprise fund to surplant funds that they were short in their general fund. And there was a major article in the paper about that.
I was on the impression, so I was on the impression by statute that it's illegal to do that.
To do what he said it is.
No, no, to take, to cross.
Pollinate.
Pollinate enterprise funds.
Restricted funds, it would be true to say restricted funds would.
But he could do that with, instead of buying a scale, he could buy himself a pickup.
Sure.
And if that's a line item on his budget, he could do that, and that's not illegal?
No, it would, I don't believe it would be.
No, that wouldn't be illegal, but we'd still have the large hole in the general fund. And that's really, when you, where the rubber meets the road, let's just call a spade a spade, is sales tax, property tax, especially property tax. So when we're looking at a budget deficit because of the state aid being cut at the legislature, we'll have $191,000, and we're already starting with that premise as we're going forth to prepare our budgets here in the short order. We already know that we're probably going to be $191,000 in the red compared to what we had last year. So that's for general fund. The only way we can really make up that $191,000 is two ways. We can cut services, we can cut fire, we can cut police, we can cut general fund revenue employees, or we can increase revenues. And you increase revenues in a number of ways. One, the ugliest one, is increase property taxes. And that's what was in the papers, the governor talked about, and the state senators have been talking about the impact that that'll have on the local governments and the schools. Those are really our only options that we can do. Or you can increase sales tax. Well, we can't increase sales tax. You could increase occupation tax or occupation fees. So those are the only really ways we can fill the hole that we're anticipating we're going to have. So, you know, there's going to be some hard decisions made. And hopefully, we'll, hopefully, the economy will turn around and the revenues will come in in such a manner that we don't have too large a hole, and that $191,000 or so will start to decrease. We're hopeful that'll happen. But we can't balance it by cutting Gary's scale, and that's really the perception that we have to combat against each time we get a chance to interact with the citizens about trying to describe the differences between. And it's complicated because it isn't how private business is ran, it isn't how your personal business, your personal account at home is ran, it's really how government is ran, so.
I don't want to speak for Dave, but maybe the point he's trying to make is whether we call it a tax or a fee, it's still passed back to the taxpayer. And if we lessen that fee, that's less of a load on the taxpayer. They're not paying a fee, they might pay the same taxes, but they're lessening their fees. So I kind of see what he's maybe trying to say. It's still being paid to the government, whether we call it a fee or a tax. If we can reduce those enterprise fund spending, in the end, it's going to reduce the fees, which the end user is the taxpayer, and it'll reduce his costs. So in essence, in a big circle, if we reduce the fees, we are reducing the burden on the taxpayer.
If we reduce the fees at the solid waste department, you're saying? Right, but it won't have any impact on the general fund revenues.
Right, right, and I understand that.
I know this has nothing to do with Gary's scale, but we're talking about revenue and funds, et cetera. Are we seeing any sort of revenue from Keno?
Are we seeing any?
Uh huh.
Yes.
How much?
Randy, can you tell us what the numbers were?
Just out of curiosity.
Actually, I love budgets.
Yeah, I think we're getting about $300,000 a year net after paying your taxes and all that stuff.
And that goes into a general fund, or?
Yes, that is part of the general fund revenues.
Okay.
And the article, I think the article in the paper explained it pretty well the other night, where it broke it down and showed where we were paying the money to the.
To the parks.
To the parks, so it broke it down pretty good, too.
Gary, I have a question for you. How long does it take to install that scale if it were purchased?
Three weeks.
Three weeks? Is that right?
Well, yeah, we won't be able to start until the frost is out, but it's pretty quick.
So it'll be here prior to, prior to the ground, being ready, if we were to go ahead and do it, right? Then you've got three weeks of installing, testing, and you're up to speed.
Testing, we still have to do the interior work on the scale house.
You feel like we would need, we would want to be up to speed by April 1st, April 15th?
That's going to be pushing. I would say May 1st we could be running.
All right. I appreciate the good information you're giving us, and I know you, I sense a little frustration on the department's part, probably because this decision hasn't been made, and I understand about the 18 months people discussing this. But in my mind, I know we were talking, discussing some Plan B in this thing, what would that be? And even though we've gone through the 18 months, I was going to ask you if you could look for 18 months and two weeks before you got a decision, because I think we might just discuss a little bit more and hopefully be able to come back and maybe make a rock-solid consensus decision in a couple of weeks.
Well, I heard your problems with perception tonight. I understand what you, what this economy has put you up against, so I'm not here to be inflexible.
Oh, no, I know you're not. I know you're not.
I guess I've been involved with this since the beginning, and I want to tell Gary that I appreciate all the hard work that you've put forth in this project, and not to make excuses, but not all of us have been involved in this for 18 months. I appreciate the input from the new council and them jumping in with both feet. So I'm kind of on the same line as Rob, that maybe just give us a couple more weeks to discuss this and.
It's fine.
Throw some ideas around.
So I'd look for a motion then?
Could I?
Sure, you bet.
Thank you.
You bet.
Just a clarification, because the question was posed to me, and I said, you know, in the enterprise funds, cost of services includes payroll costs for their operations out there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I had somebody ranting and raving at me and saying, no, the labor, the payroll is separate from that and is part of the general fund, and I said, or part of, you know, and I said, no, that's not correct, that all the costs that are involved in it are part of that enterprise fund that way. So that's a piece of information that was somewhat misaligned out there, so.
I'll just give you a little bit more. The water and the sewer funds each pay 5% of their revenues to the general fund. That pays for their accounting services, that pays for their billing services, that pays for some engineering services, that pays for Randy's services. So the water bill clerk is a general fund employee, but the, all of the maintenance people are either a water employee, a sewer employee, or a solid waste.
So like the operators of the scale?
Operators and those, that is, that personnel's all out there.
So, and I guess the only other thing that I would interject, whether we do it at this point in time, or whether we do it in two weeks from now, or whether the bids are to be held open for how long? Did you get your 60 days on that, or 90?
We're probably going to be stretching it if we go much beyond the next city council meeting on this one, because I'm not sure that we've got a clear understanding of how long the bids are going to be open on this one, but.
One thing, you know, in this economy and times like that, one of the things that you'll realize is the advantages that are financial advantages due to being able to do things at this point in time. You know, one of the things that I see that keeps scaring the heck out of me every time, and that scale's made up out of a fair amount of steel, but I will tell you, since the first of the year, and actually it started in December, I've received notices, January 1, February 1, and also from March 1, of significant structural steel or steel price increases. And so I, you know, other than that, this thing's got a fair amount of, you know, electronic things in it. We probably have one of the better. We probably have one of the better buys that we're going to get, and that we're probably going to see now. Now it's just a matter of being ready to pull the trigger. And the good thing about, you know, whether you're private or, or, or public, these are bad times for, you know, for economic things, but if, if you can pull the trigger, you, you save significant money in the long run, especially if you're looking at doing it, you know, five years from now, we're not going to see it for $51,000, so.
No, I just wanted to make one additional comment to Councilman Faust's questions. As managers, we're trying to look at our capital needs over several years. And I think that Gary, when he put his budget together for the solid waste division last summer, looked at it and said, you know, I have to keep my trailer fleet up to maintain service, I have to keep the, and he came to the conclusion that his best use of capital right now is to add an additional scale to increase customer service at the facility so that he can keep the existing customers happy, and hopefully gain some additional customers that will bring additional revenue to the facility. He needs a truck next year and hasn't planned for it, shame on Gary, but I know he has. So he's looked at his things and says, right now, this is the best use of my capital.
And I understand that, and I believe that too, but I also understand that $51,000 is $51,000, and there's people out there that question, just like Jim said, he gets questioned every day, I get questioned every, what are you spending $51,000 for when we go out there and there's not a soul out there, and I can run right through the scale you got? So we get those questions every day, so we got to ask them, and I understand, $51,000 is still $51,000. So if we're going to have to start cutting the budget, we need to look every, every nook and cranny we can look at, so. But I understand it, thank you, Dennis.
We, we agree wholeheartedly, that we will be looking at all the cost savings that-
They, but Dennis, just one, one person I thought of that works at the, out at the scale house, sometimes they work in another department. We've had people that straddle departments within staff, right?
We have a few.
So that help out in different departments, some in the enterprise, but they're paid through those funds?
We're actually, I believe that person's salaries is allocated to a couple of different, different funds.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And, and actually, they're staff that shares, staff with wastewater, in the solid waste. They, they cross over out there, and at the end of the year, we make, make a transaction to, so to speak, balance up the books.
Well, I may be somewhat the devil's advocate here, but I heard the discussion go on and on and on, and I haven't really heard any positive remarks about customer service. It seems to me like that's the bottom line. Should we proceed with purchasing this scale and installing this scale, it's not going to affect our general budget in any way. It's going to be taken out of the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are already there, they're existing, and they're, it's not going to harm our general budget if we should proceed at this point in time. And the bottom line is, should we proceed at this time, our hopes and prayers would be that we would benefit and improve customer service through the landfill by alleviating any standing in line. So I guess I fail to see that we're going to gain anything by waiting two weeks, six months, six years at this point in time. I think that our main interest should be customer service, and I think we'd be in error not to proceed at this time.
Well stated, Mr. Brenneman.
Well, I guess I'm going to make a motion to table it at this time.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table at this time for further discussion. I would ask that you please vote.
Voting in favor of the motion to table, councilpersons Coy, Merrill, Lawson, Mayor Murren, Brenneman, Faust. Voting against the motion, Langy, Saunders. Motion carries.
Okay. It's been great discussion tonight, guys. We all continuously are learning, and certainly, Gary, you've done a great job in presenting to us. I don't know that there's any more facts we could ask of you, so we will let this council have further discussion. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
You've asked about this before.
Did you guys play her?
7:30.
There was on, I pulled up the website when you were asking about that.